The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, we're going to resume our budget deliberations this evening with our workshop. We went through all the accounts last, over the past several days, and we're here to do a little bit more work on it. Before we begin, however, I have a statement I'd like to read, so this will take just about a minute. This past week has changed the course of our daily lives in a stark and dramatic fashion. Families, healthcare business, and our culture are adjusting, sometimes hourly, to a reality most have never encountered. As a response to the coronavirus assault across the globe, I am committed to supporting a budget that protects vital services without creating a financial burden for our taxpayers, which includes both private citizens and businesses. Therefore, I propose a zero-mill increase for fiscal year 2021. The town managers proposed budget reflects a .68 mill increase. This is a small change which I am fully confident can be eliminated without harm. I am certain such a proposed budget will pass at the first all-day budget vote, currently scheduled for April 28th, thereby eliminating additional requirements for people to gather and participate in voting. It is my firm belief this increase can and should be lowered to protect our community as much as we can. This adjustment can be accomplished with changes to both our revenue outlook as well as our expenditures. My opinion is based on the unknown, yet probable, severe impact the economy will experience, which includes job losses, business closures, and negative effects on retirement plans that are tied to the stock market performance. As recent as today, financial experts are expecting a recession. This will continue to lead the future instability across all financial sectors. I appeal to the town manager, superintendent of schools, and my fellow council members to support this plan of action as we come together as a community and do everything in our power to alleviate any further pressure on our taxpayers. Taking care of our children, elderly, and all who will be affected by these circumstances is our duty and obligation as leaders of the Plainville community. Thank you. Robert, would you like to begin your discussion of this spreadsheet that you gave us tonight? You have on display up there?
Yes.
Can I ask a question first before we do that?
Sure.
Can I just, do you have a list of where you would cut and make adjustments?
I have some ideas, but as we go through the revenue, I would like to, you know, talk about it at that point. I want to discuss what Robert and Rob have come up with in terms of some of these adjustments.
Okay.
I do have some thoughts, but let's hold on that for now.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay.
As a preview to our discussion this evening, yesterday afternoon, I believe it was, the governor, actually it was probably in the morning, the governor issued what he called proclamation or executive order number 7C entitled Protection of Public Health and Safety During the COVID-19 Pandemic and Response: Further Extension or Modification of Statutes. A portion of that executive order dealt with municipal budgets. It mandates that, and I'll quote, "All municipal budgets deadlines for preparation of the municipal budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021 that fall on any date prior to and including May 15, 2020 are extended by 30 days." My reading of that executive order would mean that it would be applicable to the town of Plainville, and I wrote a memo or an email to Attorney Mastiani this morning indicating, and I asked him to take a look at it and see if he concurred with that, and then you have a copy of his response to the email that I put in front of you that he sent about midday today. So as such, you know, in terms of the budget hearing which we were looking to schedule this evening, according to the charter would be in the first week of April, that, you know, that, you know, that, you know, according to the executive order, this would get pushed back to the beginning of May, and that the all-day vote, which was scheduled for April 28th, would be, you know, because of, again, the executive order, would be pushed back to the end of, end of May. So I've suggested some dates in the, in the email, which you have copies of, and certainly we can discuss that during the regular session of the town council. Keeping that in mind, after our meeting work session on Thursday, I offered to go back and, based on some discussions with the town council, as we went through the individual sections of the budget, I offered to at least, you know, take a look at it and felt that some adjustments could be made, you know, as a starting point for your continuing discussion on the budget. And the first page in the handout and the part that's up on the screen is a copy of the proposed budget as it stood, you know, you know, two weeks ago when it was, when it was presented to the town council, which called for an expenditure increase of 2.16% and a mill rate increase of 1.96%. On the second page, I've suggested some considerations, some changes that the town council may want to consider. Number one is in taking a look at the revenues, we're suggesting that while a building permit hasn't been taken out for the Maricopa project yet, and being sensitive to the fact that this is a one-time revenue, I'm suggesting that the revenue, the building permit estimates for next year be increased by $50,000, that the police fees, based upon past experience, be increased by $10,000, and that the contribution from the fund balance be increased by $50,000. You may recall that in the current fiscal year, the town council had appropriated $300,000 from the fund balance. The recommendation in early March was that that be reduced to $200,000, which would have been the previous year's contribution, I think, for several years previous to that. And I'm suggesting that the town council could increase that by 50,000, you know, come midway between the $300,000 and $250,000. So that would increase revenues by $110,000. On the expenditure side, based on, you know, conversations during the review of the police budget, and certainly, conditions have changed since then, but if, if we were to add the additional officer that was requested in that budget, that would be an increase in the expenditure side of $63,000. We had indicated that, that there was some miscommunication with regards to the fire marshal's budget and his salary, that that needed to be increased by $10,000, which is, you know, to reflect the salary that we're currently paying him, the new, the new fire marshal. And the health insurance, these are the numbers that Rob Budin has calculated with respect to if the state partnership plan increases for fiscal year 21 would be 3.5% rather than the 7% that we had predicted, projected on the town side and the 5% that had been projected on the board of education side. That would, if those four suggestions were incorporated as well, the, that would mean a reduction in the expenditures by $135,680. Taken into account the increase in revenues and the decrease in expenditures, that would lower the amount to be raised by new taxes by $245,000, and the net increase would, would, that would not, that would need to be raised is $690,000, and that's from, from $935,000 that we had previously, you know, had recommended in early March. It would result in, in a mill, mill increase, you know, if incorporated in whole of 0.5 mills or a 1.45% increase in taxes. That budget is reflected on the third page, which is basically mirrors the first page other than the adjustments to those line items that I described on the second page being incorporated into the, into the budget. So this would be where it would stand if those, if those suggestions were adopted by the council. Does anybody have any questions with regards to at least what's being, what's being presented in these three slides?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Robert, you said in regards to the second page, which is the proposed changes, the health insurance line items, you said if the state increases 3.5%, are we still unclear of what's going to come down from the state?
We have not received official notice yet.
Okay.
So, so that's, you know, at least, at least, you know, a week or so ago, that's what we were hearing verbally, might occur, might happen. We were hearing that from our consultants who, you know, are keeping an eye on what's happening at the state level, but we have not received an official notification of that. So that's just, we incorporated what we're hearing, but no official notice.
I mean, it just concerns me somewhat to go off of what we're hearing, because 3.5 could quickly become 4, or 4.25, and then we're in a shortage situation again. So I just, I have concerns about the word "if" in that situation.
And my, and my point in showing it for at least demonstration purposes, so to speak, is that the council does not need to make a decision during the, during this week, and I would, I would recommend that the council, you know, not make a decision this week, perhaps, you know, explore directions until we hear at least official, you know, an official recommendation. If the public hearing is going to get pushed back to May 4th, or, you know, or May 5th, or somewhere along those lines, you know, I don't think there's an override, in my mind, there's not an overriding, you know, need to, to, to not wait until we hear that officially. On the other hand, if you did make that decision, you know, adjustments could be made after the public hearing is held in May anyhow. So if you anticipated that was the case and circumstances changed, you know, certainly adjustments could be made after the public hearing as well.
Thank you.
So regarding the insurance rates and the determination of them, are they based on past experience or future expectations? Are they based on actual experience, or is it based on a growing pool of contributors? How do they arrive at those numbers?
Well, certainly, the, the, it's a self-insured pool from their perspective, and, and we're all lumped in together with all the other communities. So it isn't Plainville's experience, it's the experience of the pool itself. So part of it is based on past experience and part of it is based upon where they see the trend in medical expenses and costs going forward. So it's a little bit of both. So they, for example, and I don't know what they're using for, for their, you know, inflation or medical inflation number, but they may project that, you know, in general, you know, medical costs are expected to go up by 5% next year. So they'll incorporate that in their, in their decision of what the increase would be from, from year to year. So, you know, with the world turning somewhat upside down with the last couple of weeks, it's certainly entirely possible that they may reevaluate their projection for medical costs going forward next year and make some adjustment that might be somewhat higher than, I wouldn't imagine that it would be lower than the 3.5% that was first thrown out there. You know, but we are anticipating that we're going to get an answer from the state or at least to an official, we're anticipating, and again, you know, sometimes we wait for a long period of time, but that will happen before the, you know, before April 1st.
Okay.
Any, anything you want to add to that, Rob?
Yes, the only thing I'd like to add is that as more history gets behind us, their indicators become clearer. In other words, the claim history, if it's, you know, in February 1st, if they thought it was going to be X, and all of a sudden on April 1st it's Y, they may adjust what they, you know, want to increase the rates by. So, you know, the longer they wait, the more history they have behind us, behind them, the more accurate their percentage change is in their mind.
Okay. Thank you. So that's still, that's still a variable unknown, that we don't have firm information on yet. Okay.
Madam Chair, just on that subject, so in other words, there is not a specific date that the state has for the state partnership plan with the provider that by such and such a date, you will let us know what the cost will be for the following year?
No.
It's open-ended?
Right. Well, I mean, they indicated it would get to us before April 1st.
Oh, they did? Okay, that's what I, okay, okay. So the April 1st is a definite, then?
Well...
No, no.
They say, they say that state budget is going to be in place by the end of the session, too.
Okay. But that, but the April 1st is a date by which they are...
In a, in a perfect world, according to them, yes.
Yes, okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I would make one comment, and that is, in order to, if the council was of a mind to at least accept these recommendations at some point in time, not necessarily this evening, in order to accomplish a no-mill increase, it would require any combination of increased revenues or decreased expenditures totaling $690,047.
So I have a, I have an observation regarding the police officer. I would like to propose for thought that we would take the, we would move the $56,000 from the position in the town manager's office and apply it to the police officer's position. Scott Colby's former, the former assistant to the town manager, the salary is still in the budget, which is not going to be filled. So I would propose we would take that salary, transfer it into the police department, it'll be short about $7,000 or so to accomplish that, and it would reduce that expenditure.
Can we talk about these individually?
Beg your pardon?
Can we talk about these individually?
Well, when you...
That's one, that's the first...
Right, can we talk about these individually? Can we talk about them one by one, or do you want to talk about them all?
Well, that's my proposal, is just to move that. If we can certainly talk about it, of course. Yeah.
Because, you know, we had discussed what that money was going to be used for. Are you proposing that we're not going to hire an assistant town manager, or we're not going to combine a human resource to...
Well, it's my understanding that the assistant to the town manager position was not going to be filled. I'm not suggesting we don't hire an assistant town manager, those are two different positions, but the assistant to the town manager was not going to be filled.
But I...
Correct.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, but I had shown you some, some information that indicated that those dollars were going to be used to combine a human resources director with the board of education and to hire an assistant to the town manager, or assistant town manager, and if, and if that transfer were made, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what should be a priority right now, and the police chief indicated that he believes this is a, this is an important position for him. And I believe the police department trumps human resources this year.
I'm not going to be able to survive without having a, a, a human resources person to, to replace, to replace a lot of the duties that Shirley is doing, and I do need an assistant manager as well.
So the, your proposal is you will have an assistant town manager?
Yes.
And you will have a human resources person?
Yes.
Okay.
I need both.
Yep.
Not one.
Well, you, you, don't you have another person besides Shirley doing some HR duties right now?
Primarily in the board of education area, about 95%.
Okay, well, that is a suggestion, and if that's something we need to explore further, we can do that, but I'm trying to use resources as best as we can project going forward.
Well, just telling you that, I'm just telling you, if you move in that direction, then I will be severely short-staffed in my office.
Okay. Yes.
Just have a quick question for Robert.
Sure.
Is this the funding for the police officer for the full year, or are we anticipating that for the half-year?
The 63 is full year.
Full year.
Did the chief say whether he would be able to wait till January to fill that position? Do a half-year?
He would probably tell you he'd rather have half an officer than no officer.
Yep.
I would imagine, that's the way I would answer that.
I didn't ask him that question. You will remember that I didn't recommend it to begin with. I mean, I would rather have somebody working in my office as needed rather than have him handing out speeding tickets on the road if there was a priority there.
Okay, well, are there any other comments regarding this? Building permits, $50,000, is that based on, well, how did that number develop?
That number was, we, we're anticipating that there's going to be a relatively large building permit taking out, taken out either at the end of June or the beginning of July, although, you know, with the economy, that's subject to change as well.
Right.
But that's based upon the information we, we know today. I'm anticipating that there's going to be a real, we're going to go over in our building permit fees for next year. I'm somewhat hesitant to, 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 to increase the building permit fees based upon that anticipated permit fee in and of itself because it's a one, you know, it's a one-time revenue. I don't expect that the building permit fees are going to stay up at that level, you know, going forward. So, you know, I'm suggesting we use a portion of that, and, and my recommendation is $50,000. Because there may be some growth in the, in the grand list going forward that, you know, you know, couldn't meet that. We have a, a new housing development that's going to have some, you know, a groundbreaking next week. I know that, you know, those houses are, as I understand it, you know, two or three a year, maybe more, depending upon the economy. So, you know, they're, you know, you know, that's something that would probably, you know, that's a 50 houses, you know, somewhere in that, somewhere in that vicinity. So if, if they built five houses over, you know, 10 years, that, you know, that, that could, that could increase, you know, based upon where we stand today, but there could be other, other slowdowns in other areas as far as development is concerned. So, you know, I see that as something that's ongoing, but that's, you know, somewhat speculative as well.
And you're recommending an additional $50,000 from fund balance?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other comments? I, I'm not ready to certainly make a decision on a final budget with this information. I don't know about anybody else. What are your thoughts? Do you want to wait? We have information that may be more accurate, as Rob said, as this insurance information can come through. Would you like to hold on this and do some more thinking on it, and we can look at it again when there's more information? Yes?
I do have a couple of comments, I think, before we move on.
Okay.
One, regarding the permits, you know, we are looking at a specific project that we're expecting to generate this revenue, and as a one-time revenue, I'm okay with putting $50,000 towards the budget or increasing it by $50,000. What I'd like to see with the balance of whatever we get is to use it, whether we put it in a, you know, a CIP fund or a capital fund. One of the things that I was very excited about this budget is the fact that we are bumping up what we're spending in capital this year, and I think because this project's a one-time revenue, I think it would be more than appropriate to use any funds or any fees that are created through this project, that we use it and continue to do capital items and treat it as one-time revenue, because we don't want to overemphasize our revenues or overestimate our revenues, especially ones that we know we aren't going to be getting year over year, because eventually we're going to have to pay for that in the tax increase. So, you know, with what the town manager is proposing, I, I'm fine with $50,000. I know we, we were talking about numbers and the couple hundred thousand dollar potential in fees that, right, balance get put into some kind of capital fund that we can continue to chip away at the capital projects that we've gotten behind in the last, you know, probably 10, 12 years.
Okay.
And also, you know, just the other thing, Madam Chair, you made a comment, you had your statement, I, you know, I don't know if you want to just give us a copy of what you have, or...
You want just a copy of my statement, because there aren't any numbers in there?
Well, no, you were, you started to go through some ideas. I was wondering, are you going to continue to just go through them, or is it something you can just print or take a copy of and just hand out?
No, well, I don't have a copy of my ideas. I certainly have a copy of the statement, which I'd be happy to email to you. I did speak about the police officer position, and that was one of my ideas. My other idea was exploring, using more for the building permits, so that's another thought I had in mind. Regarding the health insurance and the board of education insurance, when I was deliberating about how I can get to where I would like us to end up, those numbers are actually almost exactly what I was hoping we would be able to take in as an expense reduction. And so I'm, if, if that ends up that way, that will certainly be to our benefit.
I'm glad our calculations match up.
To the dollar, actually, 200,000. So, you know, those are some of my thoughts. I, I do really believe that we are, we are looking at uncharted territory, and this is nothing that, nope, everybody else knows, we are, we are coming into some very troubled times, very troubled times for not just our community, but for our entire nation. I'm, I am desperate to try and mitigate some of this impact on our businesses who are going to be closing. Some of them are closing right now for a period of time, and there's no indication of when they'll be able to reopen. Schools are closed. That may go well beyond the two-week timeframe that people are looking at right now.
I bet you they're not back before April vacation, to be honest.
Beg your pardon?
I imagine they won't be back before their April vacation, especially...
Indeed, I mean...
They've been approved for the distance learning.
There's some, there's some thought that they may not go back. They may be out for a couple of months, not a couple of weeks. So the trickle-down effect on our community, as every other community, is going to be impactful, to say the least, and next year's financial outlook, right now, the financial outlook is pretty awful. I don't know what it's going to be like July 1st, but I think it's going to take a very long time for all of this to recover. So I truthfully, with all sincerity, would like us to be able to deliver a budget that can help out not only the individual taxpayers, but our businesses who are going to struggle mightily during this whole time. It's just going to be impossible to gauge the, the final impact.
And Madam Chair?
I'd be happy to continue to work on this. I'll be happy to ask the board of education to come in and talk with us and see if there's something they can do, even if it's on their operating, because we are using a lot of money out of our fund balance to pay for our capital. So any, any change in capital is negligent, because negligible, because we're still at $800,000 as we had last year.
Yep.
But there may be other areas that, if we put our heads together, we can try and come up with something.
I would just say, I do agree with your statement about, you know, we do need to be very careful as we go through the next budget season. I mean, since, you know... I mean, since, you know, my statement would be, I think we should look at lowering the mill rate, to be honest. I don't think we should stop at zero then. We should continue to look to lower the mill rate.
It's going in the right direction, as far as I'm concerned. So if we can continue thinking about how we can get there in a financial plan that makes sense, that isn't going to... And the other concern I had is our fund balance, because I recall some years back where we had a terrible impact on our revenues. It was back in 2008 or '09, and there was an increase to the budget of 6% or 7%. And I am concerned about our fund balance and where we're going to end up with everything looking at the following year, because there's a lot that can happen, and too much is happening too quickly right now. So, that's my concern. I'm hoping that people can understand this isn't, none of these ideas that I have, and certainly I don't have all of the ideas. There's a lot of people that have good thinking, that can help us out, but none of it is intended to be punitive, and none of it is intended to hurt people. But I truly do want to make sure that we have done the best job we can, at least for next year, beginning July 1st. And then, whatever's going to happen after, we're going to have to deal with it. But I do want to actually try to start off on that foot going forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I am in absolute agreement that we should at least go and try to get this down to zero, or even lower than that, if we can. I was thinking that the building permits could be bumped up a little bit based on what's going to be built. And that police officer, I'm just thinking, can we just revisit the HR thing again? So the HR person that you have, she does some finances, and she does some HR, and 95% of the HR is for the Board of Ed.
Which position are you talking about?
The person that you have doing Board of Ed HR right now. And then you have an assistant town manager. Does she do all the HR for the town hall?
No, not anymore. Not anymore, she's stepping back.
Okay, so who, do we have anybody doing that right now?
Well, she does some of it, but she, you know, and some of it is done by the person who's doing the Board of Ed. But most of that position for the, for the Board of Ed position is probably, you know, 90, 95% of that, of that time is taken care of, is taken care of the stuff that comes up with the Board of Ed. So yes, Shirley is doing some of the HR on the town side?
So if Shirley retires and you hire a new assistant manager, assistant town manager, are you going to change the duties of that assistant town manager to take on some of the HR?
No. The assistant town manager will not, will no longer be involved with HR, will be taking on some of the duties that Shirley was doing previously. That didn't relate to HR, and the duties that Scott Kobe was doing. So that would be the position of the assistant town manager. In talking to Steve LePage and myself, we feel that we need, there's policies and procedures at the HR level that have been, you know, that haven't been taken care of for the last several years. And it's become, you know, critical to have these policies in place, and to have these procedures in place. And some things are falling between the cracks, because we don't have enough hours at the HR level. So we were working over the last several months towards a combined position that would be able to do things that even go beyond what has been done at the Board of Ed level and at the town level in the past. And we feel these are critical items, given the changing requirements that we've had, and, you know, as it relates to family medical leave, as it relates to workers' comp issues, as it relates to contractual issues, as it relates to, as relates to just grievance issues, and those types, and those types of things, that are happening both at the board's side, more on the board's side than the town's side, that the superintendent has some needs that are already getting fulfilled. And so I felt the best way to handle that would be, would be to have a joint, you know, a higher-level position, a joint position, and utilize the savings that we would have from the assistant manager's position, from Scott Kobe's position, from potential changes at the Board of Ed level as well, to contribute to that. And to be able to hire an assistant manager and a, and an HR person that could oversee both the town and the Board of Education. So those dollars, that was the reason why I was requesting that, that while I'm not going to hire an assistant to the town manager, that those dollars will be needed in order to make that, in order to make that, those changes. We need help at the HR level.
So creating a new
And I need help at the assistant town manager's position.
Hiring a new person?
But we're eliminating a position too. We're eliminating the assistant to the town manager.
So there's no additional staff in this whole moving?
That's correct.
There's no addition, the staffing number, other than no assistant town manager, that position is not going to be filled.
The assistant.
But there are going to be no additional people connected to these changes, correct?
Right, there may be a reduction in some part-time positions.
Okay. Well, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
You had more to say.
No.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wonder if it would be possible to ask Robert if he could, and realize this would just be a draft, you know, obviously. Maybe because I'm a very visual person, if you could do something where, we're talking about, this would ultimately create two positions where there were currently three. And then you said possibly some other part-time changes? But if you could do a draft and maybe put some
Like a little bar chart or something to that effect?
A one-pager kind of thing.
Well, it'd be two positions where there would possibly be two and a half, not three.
Yeah, okay, mhm. That would be helpful, I think, as long as, you know, given that we do have a little more time
Well, of course, of course.
to do our work on the budget.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, part of it is because it's not fully developed, and part of it is it involves an existing position that
I realize.
doesn't know about what may be forthcoming as far as the recommendation.
Yes, I do realize that.
And that's why I'm somewhat hesitant about, you know, talking about, because it may become obvious as to what, you know, we're proposing, and I'm not sure that that's fair to the person who may be involved with that position.
Mhm, yep. I do understand that. I realize this would just be a tentative type of draft, but...
Okay. No, I think that's a good idea. I think that, you know, it may give us a better sense of what's happening with changes in that particular area. All right. Are there any other comments or requests for information at this point in time?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if we want to talk about going forward. It sounds like
Yep.
tomorrow night, we probably aren't going to meet, or
We do have one scheduled for tomorrow, yeah.
Pardon me?
We have one on our calendar for tomorrow, and
Yes, that's why I asked, do we need to meet tomorrow?
Yeah, of course, we have to get back together again. I'm having concerns about constantly bringing people together at this point in time, because we are not socially isolating ourselves here. We're pretty close, and I have a sincere concern for that.
And that's my question, that if we're delaying
And anybody else that has to come in.
30 days, do we need to pick like a new date that we start coming back together?
I open that
I don't see why we need to meet tomorrow night if we don't have to make a decision until the end of April, if we're moving the public hearing
Sure.
to the beginning of
I agree.
Because I would think the longer we can wait, the more accurate some of these numbers may be as we get into this.
Understood.
Madam Chair, I'm saying perhaps even the discussion on the positions that we just talked about may become clearer in the next couple of weeks.
Exactly. I think that we should probably, I was supposed to not be here for the beginning of the April meeting, but the odds are I probably will be here. Not that, not that my being here or not would impede the work of the Town of Plainville, of course. But I think that if you, if you would like to, we could wait until sometime in April, early part of April, if that's the case. If Rob gets more additional information earlier than that, and we would like to meet at the end of March, perhaps we'd want to do that as well. So, what are your thoughts? Do you want to wait and see where we get, when we get the information, and then schedule it at that time?
Madam Chair, I think we're going in the right direction. I mean, we've already taken some, chipped away at this budget already to a 0.50. And I agree with you 100%, we need to chip away more.
Okay. What about the timing of our getting together? You want to wait until Rob has some information for us, or do you want to try and do this at the beginning of April?
I mean, you could wait till the week of March 30th.
Yep.
I mean, maybe wait till the Thursday of that week or something. I don't know if that, town hall's, well, open until
Well, the only problem with that is we're not sure
Not everybody else.
What's going to progress with this
I know.
No, just like
coronavirus. By March 30th, we could have a complete disaster on our hands.
If things change where we couldn't all physically meet, Robert, is there an opportunity for us to teleconference in to discuss the budget if something happens that the majority of us could not get together and do this? Could we teleconference in?
You'd have to adopt certain procedures in order to do that, but yes.
Okay, so that's an option?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we, why don't we do that? We'll, we'll hold off on the next meeting until the end of March. Maybe by then we'll have more information. Just looking at a calendar. March 30th, you said was on a Thursday?
Uh, no, April 2nd is a Thursday.
April 2nd is a Thursday.
Monday.
All right, 30th is Monday. Shall we set it now, or do you want to wait and see how the next week and a half transpires?
I think at least a tentative
Yeah. You want to set it up for the 30th of March? That's a Monday?
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you want to do this at 6:00 PM, as we've been doing right along?
It's okay for me.
That works?
I, 6:30.
So March?
I made a commitment for Monday, March 30th. I can cancel the commitment, but so that is the fifth Monday, and somebody asked me to speak before them on dealing with the charter revision in another town.
If that's a problem, we could look at the 31st as well.
Yeah, 31st.
31st?
31st is fine.
Yep. Why don't we look at those two dates and see how everybody does?
The 31st works for me, but can we do 6:30 instead of the 6 o'clock?
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
You want, shall we go for the 31st at 6:30?
Sounds good.
Yes.
Everybody?
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right, Robert, does that work for your scheduling?
Oh, yes, it does.
Okay, you'll let us know. Okay, thank you for your input tonight. We can, we have a few minutes, we can take a break until we begin our regular meeting at 7:00. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is March 16th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge, and I will have Councilman Cox lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, going through the agenda, we do not have any presentations or public hearings, so I will ask for approval of the previous meeting minutes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2020, regular meeting; March 5th, 2020, public hearing; March 10th and 11th, 2020, special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Last week I attended as liaison the Committee on Aging. Obviously, one of the major topics were the steps being taken related to the coronavirus. One of their highlights, however, was the information on the grant application that they will be submitting to the North Central Area Agency on Aging that will cover a variety of services, should they get that, including some of the medical services that are offered at our senior center. And the other two meetings that I would normally have gone to, Library Trustees and Conservation Commission, were on the nights that we were here.
Oh, okay.
During our budget workshop.
Fair enough.
So I would be getting updated from those two groups.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to report? All right, moving on, we have some appointments and resignations tonight.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Philip Broschew as a regular firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Adam Sennaruli as a regular firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Brian Desjardins from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Last one.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Keith Madison from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other appointments or resignations not listed on our agenda tonight? No? Okay, moving on. Today is the 16th. Board of Education, do we have a report? I think this would be the working microphone, please.
Jeez, barely got in the door. Becky Tyrell, 174 West Main Street. I wanted to start by, once again, thanking the council and the town manager and chief for coming to our meeting last Monday, and helping out with the unfortunate incident that occurred. And really, thank you for helping us as the board, but more importantly, thank you for really helping the residents as well, because I think they got a lot more out of it than meeting with the chief and the town manager than they would meeting with us. So, I thank you for that. So, as far as the coronavirus is concerned, obviously, everyone is aware that schools closed as of Monday, and will be closed till the end of the month. We did receive approval from the state to use this time as online learning and be able to obtain credits for students, so that'll be great. And I believe tomorrow, we'll begin serving lunches out of Plainville High School for students who need that. And I think it's 11 to 12, if I'm not mistaken. There's a form, superintendent sent out something that has an interactive form. You can go on there and check on it and say that you want to, you know, actually ask for food, you know, so they'll know in advance how many to make. That would be awesome. So, so that's basically what's happening right now.
So Becky, just to be clear, is this for all Plainville students that may do that, not just students on a certain program? It's everybody?
Right, anybody there, you know, it doesn't matter, really. You can allow anybody to do that. And, you know, I think people are feeling more nervous than usual. Some people don't know if they're going to get paid next week.
Right.
Some people are going to the grocery store and now finding food and getting nervous about that, which rightfully so. So we might find people that we normally wouldn't think would be taking advantage of something like that, taking advantage of it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions.
Thanks for your help with everything. Report of the town attorney? Good evening, no report? Okay, good to see you. All right, report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Yes, the first item I have is some discussion with regards to the coronavirus. Representative Bill Pettit is here this evening giving an update on the latest information regarding the coronavirus, otherwise known as COVID-19. So with your permission, I'd like to ask Representative Pettit to step forward. Hearing no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. William Pettit, 132 Redstone Hill. For everybody here and people in TV land are feeling overwhelmed, it's okay, because I'm feeling overwhelmed, okay. I only probably had about 75 emails on it today and was on about four phone calls, so, which is probably about a quarter what the governor and some other people were on. So there's a lot of information. So I guess I would first say that there's So there's a lot of information. So I guess I would first say that there's a lot of information out there. You can go to the CDC website. You can go to ct.gov. Get on a daily mailing if you are so inclined. A lot of decisions haven't been completed because all the data is not in. So in terms of where we are today, as of the briefing today, we had 41 positive cases, though I saw before I left that there were perhaps many more reported down in Fairfield County. We may be much higher than that later today. The governor's executive order limited gatherings to 50 people, as everyone's well aware. Restaurants will be closing in about 53 minutes. They will only be able to do takeout food. Bars that do not serve food will be completely closed. Bars that serve food will still be able to allow for takeout food. Off-track betting facilities are to close tonight, and gyms, fitness studios, and movie theaters. However, there's some confusion out there. Grocery stores, places like Home Depot, Lowe's, et cetera, will not close. Drive-through testing has begun at a number of hospitals. I got a text about an hour before I got here from Hartford Healthcare. They have set up at seven additional hospitals throughout the state throughout the course of the week. For the most part, for testing, people will need to have a fever symptoms and a note from their physician requiring testing. It's not such that you're going to be able to just walk up and say, "I'm really worried about this. Please test me." It's not going to happen that way. You may have heard the Public Health Service, the Corona Response Team federally yesterday had a long press conference with the Admiral Gerard. And he suggested that we are going to come into the ability to have an additional 2 million tests nationwide this week. In addition, he and Dr. Fauci from NIH talked about a new testing system where it'd be able to do this with rapid turnaround. The Vice President for Operations for LabCorp, one of the major labs, is actually a Connecticut citizen living in Simsbury. And I spoke with him a little bit ago, and he said Raritan, New Jersey's going to, LabCorp is going to have the capability of doing upwards of 25,000 tests in a day if the kits are available. So hopefully, we're going to be ramped up this week because getting that information will provide us a better idea of where we are and where we're going to head. I realize it may cause some alarms because there's many more diagnosed, there are many more cases out there than we have diagnosed because we have enough testing available. Mrs. Tyrell talked about some of the Board of Education issues. For the, for, thank God we're not in a border state. Apparently, New York is allowing takeout alcohol. Connecticut is not allowing takeout alcohol. And they said there will be no, no exceptions to that. We heard that, again, places of worship, listen to 50 worshippers. I know the Archdiocese has told people to stay away for a couple of weeks now. Let's see. For the people, people watching this and for people here, the Greater New Britain Chamber of Commerce actually put out, Bill Moore, their executive director, put out a great email today that I posted on my site with many resources that are available for people in the business community. Interim guidance for business employers from the Center for Disease Control. Information from the Department of Labor and locally about family and medical leave. We've been approved for a Small Business Administration loans from an application the state put in last week, up to $2 million in assistance for small businesses. And he has a link there to the Small Business Administration loan program. You can see if you are eligible. There's information on this about the Connecticut Family Medical Leave Act, as well as the CDC Guide, travel tips, wage at our site, OSHA, et cetera. Good news from EverSource. EverSource made the decision to suspend all business customer shut-offs and the mailing of discontinuation notifications, as did the water companies. The government's been in consultation with the casinos. And as of this evening, Mashentuck Equi, Mohegan Tribal Nation temporarily calls Casino Reserve Properties 8 o'clock on Tuesday for a two-week period, which is, which is, which is big news. It wasn't clear which way that was going to, going to head. In addition, I met with a couple of restaurant owners this afternoon, people who've been in the business for 40 years. There's obviously a big concern about the loss of business, a lot of waiters and waitresses that live check to check, single parents, et cetera, and that's a big issue. And I've put in a, I've put in an inquiry to the executive branch as to whether they're going to allow people to hold back on sales tax or income tax payments, and they're going to look into those kind of things. They have relaxed the requirements for unemployment insurance. Let's see. SBA talked about they're deferring, if you've got a Small Business Express loan, the payments are being deferred right now. They have effectively, the filing deadline for certain annual taxes are extended by 30 days, including a passer entity tax, unrelated business income tax, corporation business return tax, et cetera. So people can go to the ct.gov/coronavirus website or the Department of Revenue Service website, ct.gov/drs. That's how I said it. So 30-day, 30-day moratorium on utility service. I mentioned electric and water, but also that includes gas. And I guess finally, on a high note, today began the first trial of vaccine in Washington State of 45 or 60 people with an mRNA vaccine with three, three separate groups. It's going to be a while before there's results, and obviously before it's clinically available, but that's gotten off the ground in record time. There's, in addition, antiviral therapy being researched that's going to be used fairly quickly in cases where they don't have anything, anything else to use. As of right now, there's no clear-cut antiviral therapy that's available, but we're speeding, speeding along on both those issues. So it's complicated, and I think in closing, I think the basic stuff is the critical stuff, meaning hand washing, social distancing. These people out there and on TV, there's very few people here tonight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight people in the audience. So there's more council people and members of the staff here than members. So we're maintaining our six feet here. So washing, distancing, and sort of following with the the distancing for the next, next couple of weeks because essentially, and I'm probably speaking to the choir here, but for the people, what we're trying to do is slow the number of cases. It's a virus that's going to get into the population. We're going to have many cases. What we don't want is a spike, a spike that overwhelms the healthcare system. We have about 65,000 ICU beds in the United States. If this virus goes full form, we may need upwards of 200,000 ICU beds, which is three times the number that we physically have at this point in time. I don't know the ventilator number, but it's probably something similar, similar to that. So what we're trying to do is slow the cases that occur, so the 10, 15, 20% of cases where people get very ill trickle into the system and do not overwhelm the system such that we lose people because we have inadequate resources to care for them. In addition, it puts a huge brunt on the healthcare providers who's, if they start to see sick people all the time, some of them will get sick and be taken out of the equation. So it puts a big stress on the system. So the more we can slow the number of cases that occur, the better off we all are. And that's why these measures are being taken, but many people feel are somewhat draconian and the government interfering with people's private ventures and the like. But it's one of those damned if you do, damned if you don't, if we don't take these measures right now and try to prevent a huge surge in cases and there's many more illnesses and many deaths. People say, "Why didn't you do what you needed to do?" And if we do it and we sort of stem, stem the tide and sort of tamp, tamp down the problem, people say, "See, you didn't really need to do it." So, but I think, I think we do need to do it. I think it's the appropriate approach. I think it's better, better safe than sorry. So I know that's a lot, Robert, you said only a minute or two. I apologize. So maybe longer, but there's, there just seems to be a plethora of data that comes out every day that I, you know, I tell. It can be somewhat overwhelming, so people just need to take their time and read it. And I guess we all have more, more time at home and less sports to watch and less meetings and things to go to. So we have more time to, to read this and take it all in and decide where we need to head. And I guess the one thing I left out was the big issue, hopefully, we can get on the horn with our reps and senators federally because the bill has gone through the House. It's stuck in the Senate. That has to do with paying for people that become unemployed and family leave and et cetera. And it's getting bounced around the Senate with a lot of different competing ideas about which way it's going to go. And so if we can move that forward, that would be a big help to Connecticut as well as the rest of the country if we can get more, more funding for, for the things as we're, we're trying to tamp this down. So I thank the council for your time, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I have some report to continuing more on the local side. Town staff has been inundated with information on the virus daily, as Representative Pettit indicated on a state level as well. We have bi-weekly briefings have been scheduled with the health director and representatives from the three towns in the regional health district being Southington, Plainville, and Middlefield. There are also conference calls with state health officials. Information regarding the coronavirus can be found on the Plainville-Southington Regional Health District webpage at www.pshd.org. Town staff encourages residents to go to this webpage if any, any questions about the virus. There is information such as frequently asked questions, guidance for travelers, and a Johns Hopkins online dashboard and other information. The Johns Hopkins online dashboard is a pretty interesting website. It talks about the number of cases around the world, in particular, you know, and how we, how the United States measures up, and it also has maps on it that indicate, you know, where a lot of the concentrations are as far as the virus is concerned across the United States especially. Based upon the recommendation of health officials, the Plainville schools will be closed for two weeks, and it looks like it's going to be till at least the end of the month. According to information that was, that was put forth yesterday, beginning today. Additionally, the senior center, the senior centers and libraries will be closing in the three towns beginning tomorrow, Tuesday, March 17th. The Historical Society announced today that the historical center will be closed indefinitely. The municipal center will be closed to the public beginning Thursday morning until further notice. Residents making tax payments should put them in the drop-off box in front of the municipal center rear entrance. These closings will last a minimum of two weeks and will be reevaluated whether they will be continued beyond that date. While the buildings will be closed, the public staff will still be working at each location to address any issues that may come forward. There will be limited services provided during this period. For example, residents will be able to request books online at the library, and arrangements can be made to pick them up at the, at the library. Staff will bring the books to your vehicle. And there's other, that's just one example. If there are any questions about the closings, please contact either the library or senior center directly. There is also information available on the town website as well. We are updating the town website with information about the library, about the senior center, about the municipal center, and the services that we're encouraging as far as online is concerned. If, if there's a particular instance where it requires somebody to come into the municipal center, we can make those arrangements on an individual basis by contacting the appropriate department, and arrangements will be made. Not sure if there's any questions with regards to that.
So just an observation, we, you and I had spoke earlier today regarding our town council meetings. And if we can make an arrangement for residents to view it in live time rather than physically be here until some of this is resolved, which may be for a few months, maybe, who knows? Can, I don't know, I don't know if the council thinks that's a task we should ask the town manager to look into to see if we can have some sort of to do a little bit more exploring about whether it does actually have to be live feed or if taping it and then making sure it's available for the public within a certain timeframe would satisfy the requirements of us not having people in the audience? Do you, do you want the town manager to look into those kinds of options for the, for the foreseeable future? That seems to be the term we're using these days? Yes?
Yes, I'm fine.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, we should look into the options, yeah. And I, because I did notice that live feed was one of the criteria that's stated in the executive order and, yeah.
It may not be a live, a live visual feed.
Oh, okay.
It could be audio.
Yeah, could be. Yeah, I think it's a live broadcast or something. So, yeah, it could be, but definitely, I would definitely look in, look into it, yeah.
Okay.
Certainly talk to the IT department. We'll review the, the new order as far as the requirements are concerned and meet with the IT people and see what we can put together and, and report something back to the council, probably via email and then, you know, make preparations if that's what you, you know, that's the direction you want to go.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll move on to the transfer station opening. The transfer station on Granger Lane will open for the season on Saturday, April 4th. The hours of operation are from 8:00 to 3:00, Saturdays only until the season's closed. Plainville residents must show identification. Please be advised there is a fee for disposal. For a list of acceptable items and fees, please visit the town of Plainville website at www.planevillect.com. As far as the spring bulk collection, town of Plainville has an on-demand policy for collection of bulk pickups. Residents who currently have curbside rubbish and recycling collection from the town can request one bulk pickup per year, free of charge, for large items that do not fit in normal rubbish collection. For a list of acceptable bulk items, please go again to the town website. We keep repeating this because just is helpful. Property owners will be able to schedule their one bulk pickup free of charge either in the spring or in the fall. Bulk collection will take place on Mondays during the following periods. We're going to start on April 20th through June 29th. This will exclude May 25th due to the Memorial Day holiday, and again, resume September 14th to October 26th. Eligible residents must first call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. Calls placed by 3:00 PM on Fridays can be scheduled for collection on the following Monday. Next item I have is road bond construction update. Preparations are being made for the upcoming repaving of the streets. First several streets to be addressed will be Norton Park Road will be done first, followed by Norton Trail, Cicero Court, Pearl Street, West Pearl, Duval Lane, and Roseanne Lane. The milling and paving are expected to begin in early April. A complete list of the streets planned for repaving this year can be found on the town website under the news tab. If you scroll down to, on the news tab, it'll list all the streets that we plan to do this year. The streets that I just mentioned are just the first several that will start in April. And in fact, preparations, if you're driving in those areas, have been made as far as road crew and other, and subcontractors working on some of the drainage system in that area. The plans are also the, that parking lot that's, as you come into Norton Park on the right side, is, is being prepared for repaving as well. I know that there was some conversations with council members a while ago. That won't, we won't, we will not be using road bond monies to do that particular area. We'll be using, you know, other dollars. Probably town aid road dollars to do that, to do that parking lot. And so, you know, that's, that'll be paved. There'll be some curbs put in, some lines painted, and it'll be, probably be a crosswalk there so that we can direct, you know, people who use that parking lot, you know, to, to not walk between cars and walk out into the road, but it'll be, make it a lot safer. So the plans are to do that. At the same time, we're doing the, we're doing the Norton Park Road. Residents are asked to use caution while repaving is being done, you know, and there'll be, there's a lot of signs out there. And I know our road crew will work to try to direct people around the construction as best as possible. Next item I have is the 2020 census. A letter invitation to participate in the census has been mailed, asking residents to go online and complete the census questionnaire. Did everybody get their letter in the mail? Yeah?
I did not.
Yeah, neither.
Not yet.
No?
Not yet.
I got my second one in the mail already.
Me too. I got two.
And that's the reminder letter will also be sent, I said, the next several days, and I wrote that two days ago, so I received it already. I did go online over the weekend. I did complete the census for, for at least our household. It wasn't a very difficult process, but reminder postcards will also be sent beginning the March, beginning the week of March 26th, followed by reminder followed by reminders beyond those dates as well. The Census Bureau is encouraging everyone to participate by going online at www.2020census.gov. For residents who do not have a computer, arrangements have been made to have them available to the public at the municipal center, library, and senior center. I mean, I could be able to get access to them right away, but when those facilities reopen, there'll be opportunities for people to do it online. Census takers will begin visiting homes beginning in May for those who do not complete it online. So you have until May before people will start knocking on your doors. Any questions with regards to that?
I'd just like to comment that, as we know, we've, there's, the town has a subcommittee of volunteers that have been gathering together at least monthly for the past several months, talking about the census and thinking about ideas to make the census more available for, certainly for online completion of that, making people aware of it. If you didn't notice today, when you came in, one of the big signs in front of the municipal center talks about the census, and it's time to do that. We have, the senior center is going to have an April 1st Census Day kickoff celebration with cake, and they like to have parties down there. Well, actually, they're not going to be able to do that. I'll walk that one back. Keep it in your mind, though. But Rosemary, you've been attending the meetings.
Right, yeah.
There's a lot of activity that's been going on.
Right. I think we've been an active group, and there's a lot of things going on. And just like to reiterate a few things. First of all, the importance of the census for our town. It will make a difference on funding that comes through from the federal government. It will make a difference in terms of the districting, redistricting of congressional districts and state districts as well. And I think also, the third reason it's important, it's important for planning, for whether it's local government or even businesses in our municipality. It's secure. They've done everything possible, certainly to protect the data as it comes in. The data is confidential. The only government agency that can see it is the Census Bureau. They cannot share it with any other government agency, including law enforcement. The purpose of it is to collect statistical data. There's no other government purpose, and that's why it is held very, very confidential. As a matter of fact, the census information for a particular census does not become publicly released for 72 years. So even if you go on Ancestry now, you know, the most recent one you find is 1940, and 1950 won't be up for two more years. And also, one key piece of information that I think is important to stress is that it does not ask for your social security number. That is something, of course, a lot of people rightfully are concerned about. You know, some of the kiosks and the computer stations that were planned, obviously, may be a bit delayed, but there's also been a lot of other outreach and publicity as well. So hopefully, we'll get a very good return in terms of participation in Plainville.
Yeah. I would also like to mention that the sign in front of the town hall was paid for by a donation from the New Britain Community Fund, who stepped up and said, "We can offer some funding for some of these census activities you wanted to do." So I thought that was a very nice thing for them to do. And in addition to that, I would like to particularly thank Andra Ingles. She is the intern at the town manager's office. Andra has been coordinating this entire effort. She's been doing research. She has been sort of the keynote person to keep this whole process going. So I do want to mention that she has been very good and got lots of information, and she's a wonderful communicator. So if you have any questions, if you can't find it on the website, Andra really does have a lot of information at her fingertips that she can share, and she'd be glad to help anybody out.
Yeah, she's been, she really ran with a lot of the ideas that we came up with, and it's been very helpful.
Indeed. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Next item I have is the April calendar. You know, before yesterday, we were going to be suggesting that the public hearing be scheduled for early April. We're now suggesting that the town council may want to, because of the requirement in the governor's executive order that was issued yesterday, mandating that towns, certain towns, which Plainville is one, need to delay their budget approval process by 30 days. Under our charter, the public hearing on the town council's recommended budget was, is supposed to be held at the first week in April. Now recommending that that be the first week in May. I'm suggesting Monday, May 4th, which is the town council meeting night as well. The charter calls for the all-day budget vote to be held on April 28th this year. And I'm also recommending that the all-day vote be scheduled for May 28th, which happens to be a Thursday, but recommending that you consider May 28th, which would allow for, if the budget passes, which would allow for the town council to set a mill rate and be able to get the tax bills out on time by July 1st. So we would need to know sometime early in June what that mill rate was going to be in order to meet that July 1st mail. So that's what we're suggesting for April, that we still hold our next town council meeting on April 6th, and we'll, you know, we'll see what, you know, as far as the rest of the schedule, we'll play that by ear at this point in time. If we don't, if we don't have any large, you know, a lot of work or action items, you know, certainly we consider, you know, either canceling a meeting or, you know, and try to, you know, keep that in mind as we go forward. I do know that we see a presentation at the next meeting dealing with the White Oak property. We do have a report that came in a couple of days ago, a draft report. It went up to DECD, which is paying 100% for the report. They're reviewing it, and I anticipate that we may have a work session at the April 6th meeting to go over that and perhaps look for some direction from the town council as far as how to proceed. So I know that, you know, the April 6th meeting, you know, could be, you know, a significant one. Whether we combine that on the 13th and, you know, and only have one meeting in April, you know, we'll play that by ear. I know that plays with, plays a little bit of havoc with people's schedules, but I know there's some travel plans, at least for me, has changed, and it may change for others as well. So we'll see.
Well, I think having a fluid calendar in April is going to be important. We just don't know about how things are going to transpire for everybody. And I certainly advocate the fewer times we all have to get together, probably the better everybody's going to be. So, yeah.
And again, you know, up on the screen now is the webpage of locations for information on the coronavirus, as well as, you know, the town's, you know, web location as well. And, you know, we're encouraging people to do a lot of things online now, at least maybe a little bit more online now than has been in the past. So we'll continue to feature those, you know, whenever we can. The next item I have is the EverSource gas line installation. Last week, town staff met with EverSource representatives and were informed that they will be replacing existing gas lines on Bohemia Street. That's between West Main and Broad Streets, Prentice Street, West Broad Street, portions of Fairview and Forest Streets. This work is being done because their records show that this line is old and has several leaks that need to be addressed. The pipes are currently cast iron and will be replaced with more modern piping materials. Town staff informed EverSource that because these streets have been repaved over the last several years, EverSource will be required to perform a full overlay in these areas, curb to curb. They have agreed to do so. Construction is expected to begin in early April, and you may even see some markings out on the road if you're, if you're driving that area as well. This came as a little bit of surprise to us. We do give the EverSource and other utilities a listing of our streets in advance. We had some conversations about this. They understood that. Sometimes at EverSource, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. Sometimes some of the funding that they have available to replace these lines, you know, come forward, you know, not at convenient times as well. But this is high on their priority list to replace these sections of lines, and they recognize that they're going to have to incur a slightly higher cost because of the condition of those roads. And, you know, we really can't stop them from installing these, or, you know, replacing these lines. But we certainly have a certain amount of influence over the methods and means that they use to, you know, repair the roads. I will say that EverSource does a good job, a better job than most, when repairing anytime they go into our roads, but it becomes more particular when we're dealing with roads that are relatively new. And Bohemia was paved a while ago, but, you know, streets like portions of Fairview, Prentice, and even West Broad was several years ago. But they've agreed to do that. And so if you see them digging up our roads, just know that, you know, they're going to repair them, you know, curb to curb. That's all I have to report for this evening. Unfortunately, I was not able to put together a dashboard for this evening with all of the other items that are going on. We'll try to catch that up next month. So unless you have any questions for me, I'm all set with the report.
Any questions for the town manager and his items on his report?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for a minute to go back to our exploring some options in terms of meeting format.
Yep.
What might be helpful as part of that would be to also perhaps identify some ways that the public comment could take place if we are not having a public meeting, whether it's, you know, emailing in and having your comments read, or phoning in, or whatever. But just as part of the, of looking at the options of how we would accommodate public comment. Thank you.
Of course. All right. Any other comments or questions regarding the town manager's report? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move into the public comment of our meeting. Anybody that wishes to speak to the council, please come to this podium here. State your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak?
No.
Yes. Yep, you can come up first.
Relevant to what?
Sure.
Jody Coulombe, 128 Bohemia Street. As we're going through the town and replacing the pavement on these streets, is there any way that we're notifying the utility companies prior to doing it? Because this isn't the first time since the road has been repaved. This is going to be the second time.
Well, I believe that we had done some work before we even began this process five years ago, trying to identify utilities and advising them that we were going to be doing these street projects. Is that correct?
We notify them on an annual basis.
Okay.
As I stated earlier in my comments, we did, we do notify them, yes, all the utilities.
Okay, because the town went through, paved, then the water line was replaced, and now they're going to, it's going to be dug up again. And I get it's going to be paved curb to curb, but maybe we should be working the other way, getting the utilities replaced if they need to, and then paving.
We don't have control over the utilities. We do notify them. We let them know what our paving schedule is, and we have made some adjustments to our schedule based upon the feedback we get, but we don't always get the feedback from them. And sometimes they have emergencies that they have to dig up.
I get that.
So we are trying to coordinate with them as best we can.
Okay, thank you.
I know the town has been, has a good relationship with Plainville Water Company, and when these paving schedules are being considered, Plainville Water is always notified or advised as to what we're going to be doing in case they have to do work. So
We do.
The locals and all the others have been.
Well, you might know, for example, Pearl Street and West Pearl Street, we were supposed to do that last year, and we delayed doing it because Valley Water told us they were going to be replacing the water mains on that street, which they did, you know, last year. And so now we're paving it this year. So, I mean, you know, to the degree that they tell us in advance, we certainly notify them in advance. And sometimes they're proactive with respect to that, and other times they're not as proactive as perhaps they should be. We see, you know, we're kind of surprised as far as, as far as, as far as EverSource is concerned. They indicated to us last summer that they were going to be doing some work in the Redstone Hill, Holly Berry area, because of some monies that became available as a result of some extensions to ESPN. A lot of that work's going to be done, you know, in the, along the side of the road and not necessarily in the road, but there's going to be some crossings and, you know, you know, this is something that, you know, came on suddenly from their perspective. And, you know, we've spoken to them about what we expect for, you know, repair of the roads in those areas as well. So, yeah, it's, you know, at times, you know, we do the notifications and we try to, and we hope that the utilities, you know, respond accordingly. Otherwise, they're going to pay the price for putting in a, you know, a repair that might not have cost them as much if they had done it, you know, in advance.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Edman?
Edman, Joel Edman, 63 Holly Berry Lane, no rail, no trail, and no thank you. Two weeks ago, I was up here talking about the noise pollution in Plainville. If the trail gap, I'll pick up where I left off. If the trail gap is allowed to happen, there will be more noise pollution in our parks and limited woodlands and streets, even though it is illegal in many places within, like Norton Park, for instance. You have stated in the past that you can deny any alignment through town. You still have a chance to save this town, and I recommend that you take it. I really hope that you seriously consider all of my concerns, especially the rails to trails, but no rails through town that will negatively affect so many adjacent homeowners and traffic. And as Marilyn said previously, it is not easy to come up here to the podium to talk about their concerns. Please change the three-minute rule to five minutes, like all of our surrounding towns. You have a tendency to compare their taxpayer-funded costs and benefits when it comes time to raise our taxes. Now, since I have some time left, I would like to mention vehicle pedestrian deaths on local and highway roads, which is publicly being called a full-blown crisis. Cell phone use and distraction by both drivers and pedestrians are accidents waiting to happen right here in Plainville. On-road, off-road, almost on-road, almost off-road, how can anyone not worry about the gap trail? As a pet project, a want, not a need, in a practically bankrupt state trying to make it its way into the future on Governor Lamont's debt diet. This snake-like alignment, very negatively impacting, costly, and unnecessary. Thank you. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. As I've always said.
Sorry.
I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that affects Perron Road, Pier Street, Broad Street, Hemingway, into the park, and of course, the Mule Hall Trail, and all the ramifications that go with it. I mean, really, it's not a good thing. Anyway, on to another subject. Unfortunately, all this, life has changed for a great many of us. Unfortunately, all this, life has changed for a great many of us. Happened to be talking to the chief today, Chief Catania, and we had a very, very nice conversation, and unfortunately, he can't be here tonight, but in the course of conversation, he had a wonderful idea about what people can do now that life has changed in the fast lane for so many of us. He said he hoped people would take this time that they have now, getting off the roads quite a bit, and not having to go to work, and so on, so forth, and kids home. He said he hoped people would take time to stop and reflect what they can do to make their lives a little bit better, and what they can do for themselves, just cutting back, calming down, spend time with their kids. And I had a good idea, too. I said, I liked what he said. I said, it would be very, very good for people to take this time and actually, they could do a lot, people could do a lot for going into the animal shelters and helping out. I understand transports aren't going to be running the roads. I don't know how true that is, but I've heard it, and that a lot of these animals now are going to be killed. So my, my thought out there is to adopt, adopt, adopt. Go help out in the shelters, the animal shelters, and do something good worthwhile. Everything is for other charities, but nobody speaks up for the animals. But I'm speaking up for the animals tonight because I think it's so important.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. We will close the public comments section. We will move on to our new business portion of the meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, May 4th, at 2020, at 7:00 in the municipal center, to hear public comment on the town council's proposed fiscal year 2021 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to set the location of the annual town meeting for the purpose of voting on the town council's fiscal year 2021 proposed budget at the Plainville Firehouse on Thursday, May 28th, 2020, for the hour, for the hours of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Sorry? Yes?
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any other discussions of interest this evening?
I do not.
Okay. Anybody else want to have anything to say before we close? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, stay well.